Would have been more if you had it upstairs.
Yeah, we had the elections is using the big room downstairs. Unfortunately, we're stuck here. You know, when you're ready. Okay, so it is 1:30 and it's a time in our schedule to have a planning hearing and this is to continue. File AM 0018-20 and ZC 0015-40. Is there anybody in the room that needs some help with hearing or visual aids? None? Okay, so I will go ahead and call for conflicts of interest. Commissioner McDonald, I have no conflict of interest, but I do need to make sure that I declare that we received a number of emails from folks. And to avoid ex parte issues. Just want to make sure I put that out there that I've received a number of emails. My responses were always just facts and not taking a position. We haven't taken a position yet because we haven't heard all the information, but I wanted to make sure I got that out there as far as the declaration.
So I also received a lot of emails. I'm sure you already all know that. So I just forwarded them to the planning so that they could be included in the file and I responded to none.
And so you're gonna ask me or you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. I had received probably the same emails. Some of them I had responded to that I had previously voted no. And if nothing new came forward, would most likely probably stand my ground on that unless something changes. And so I wanted that to be in the record.
Okay, perfect. Well, with that, you're gonna go over the, how the meeting is gonna go today?
It's, yeah, it's right there on the screen, similar to.
Same with, same thing we did last time, only today we're gonna have a little bit of a twist in that there is some new information, which is why, and I apologize again for us having to continue this, but it's important under due process law that we do that or else we would have had to redo the whole thing over again. I thought it was a fire alarm.
Oh, it's much worse.
So today, what we're gonna list, what we're gonna hear is we're gonna listen to the staff is gonna present the the new information in the file that we uncovered. Some of it came from them doing a deeper dive with DEQ. You originally said no comment. We weren't satisfied with just no comment. We wanted to know specifics as to why, because I thought it was, and a lot of that came out of your folks' concerns about the aquifer at Hootie Creek. So we wanted to make sure they stepped up to that. So today, it's gonna be kinda weird, but what we're gonna do is we're gonna listen to the new information. This is a continuation of the previous hearing. And then we will take testimony only with respect to the new information. So if you have comments on the new information, we will take that. The other, your original comments are all still part of the record and we've got a number of letters and emails that are part of the record as well, so we don't need to rehash those. So with that, I will turn it over to staff.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Milton Allerton, Planning Director, for the record. The the request before us is to consider this agricultural to rural residential comp plan change and zone change. Just a continuation. So, so at some point, the public comments to DEQ, DEQ felt that they needed to respond with additional information. That additional information came in and it has been on our website available for the public to read. I pulled a couple paragraphs out of it because I wanted to just make a point that, that this was not initiated by county staff. This was initiated by members of the public. DEQ felt that they needed to add to their response. It brings up an interesting, interesting point, and I'll get into that as I, as I peel back into the staff report a little bit and show you some of the standards that the planning is required to look at, board members. The understand that planning's job is to review the application against the codes and the ordinances and the comp plan. And, and to present that to you. And that is what we're doing here. DEQ indicated that they could not find a clear connection between the proposed change and water quality in Hootie Creek. They, they said there's apparently no surface water on the property and there's no tributaries flowing from the property, that it would, unlikely that this change, zone change would affect Hootie Creek. They did say that dust off the roads would be the most likely contributor or sediment to the creek. And roads contributing to the greatest loads to the creek are likely those that are adjacent to the creek, not those which are far removed. This property is probably close to a mile away from Hootie Creek. And you'll see that in the maps. Further interesting, DEQ continued, DEQ, similar to other agencies, prepare plans, five-year plans, 10-year plans. And so in one of their plans that they prepare, they indicated that their plans for this area, land use changes can be expected include division of large tracts into smaller tracts, changes in zoning, infill development, large tracts of previously forested agricultural land may be subdivided in zone as residential or commercial. The, the point is, is that DEQ in their plans and their analysis for this area and growth, they expect these parcels to be split down. They even indicate that while a home may occupy 10 acres, it may not continue to do that in the future. It could be broke down even smaller. There's no, there's no indication of that in our comp plans or in our, in our zoning ordinance that they will be split down to smaller sizes, but nevertheless, it's possible. Because of that letter, it, it took me back there and there has been. So it took me back to go back and review the staff report and review this request. And so, again, the request is for a comp plan change and a zone change. And this is, this is the parcel that we're talking about where this change will occur. And this map is showing all of the environmental features turned on. The lake is, the water is turned on, hydrology streams, the floodplain is turned on, the wetlands are turned on, the slopes are turned on. And, and so to indicate, the slopes show the yellow is 15 to 29% slope. The orange is 30% or greater slope. Okay, so the environmental features are important because that is what a lot of the comp plan and the zone or zoning ordinance use to justify the different designations. So when you look in the comprehensive plan under agricultural forest, it, it says that this designation recognizes areas where steeper slopes prevail, 30% or greater, transportation's provided by private roads. Okay, and you see how this kinda breaks up and you see where this lays down over this area. Greater, steeper slopes, transportation by private roads, urban services are not available, residential development challenges are present due to slope, poor soil conditions, hazard areas and lack of police or fire services. So for the agricultural forest designation, when, when they laid that down in 2005, the comprehensive plan, their intent was that the agricultural forest designation would lay down in areas that matched these words. Okay? In the rural residential, it says that the rural residential area should be in areas where urban services are not available, slopes vary up to 30%. It includes hazard areas. It includes critical wildlife habitat. Lower densities reduce potential impacts to resources and exposures to loss of property or lives. And small-scale agricultural uses and residential development are permitted. And in the comprehensive plan, rural residential is designated as lot sizes of 5 to 10 acres. In the agricultural forest section, lot sizes are designated as 10 to 20. Now, understand that the comprehensive plan is painting a picture. Those words, okay, are painting a picture. And, and so then you go take those words and you apply them to the ground. And you say, okay, where does this designation lie down? Agricultural forestry. This is one of the challenges that the planning department continues to have with the comprehensive plan. This is why, five years ago, under the direction of the board, we started working with subareas to identify unique characteristics that better define these terms. So when we talk about agricultural forestry, that definition that I just read to you is talking about slopes. It's talking about, if I, if I can go back, this, this, the main difference between these two definitions is 30% or greater slopes. Everything else is basically the same. And so agricultural forest land was intended for areas with steep slopes and rural residential was intended for areas without steep slopes. That is the main difference in those two land use designations. And so this is why the, the planning department has been working with the commission, the planning commission, and working with the subarea committees to update these definitions. So they're much more clear, they're much easier to understand. And when somebody reads those words, they can see a picture in their mind of where that lays down. The challenge with it is, is that it indicates that it's agricultural forestry, but it, it, that definition doesn't say that, right? It says areas where slopes are steeper than 30% and you look at that map and you say, based on those words, where should agriculture forestry designation and rural residential designation lie down? Oh, I'm still going backwards. Here we go. All right. Now, the zoning ordinance, it's a little bit, it's a little more in-depth in the zoning ordinance. Okay, but nevertheless, we're still challenged with the same standards. Agricultural Forest 20 is the first time it brings up prime agricultural soils. Characterized by agricultural forestry uses. Areas where one or more of the following apply. So so when we look at this, Agricultural Forest 20 designation or zone, zone district. And where does that apply? It, it makes a little bit more sense that it could go in an agricultural forestry zone, but it could also go in a rural residential, the way that it's written. Agricultural Forestry 10, which this particular parcel is zoned, AF10, is in areas that do not feature prime agricultural soils, but where agricultural forestry pursuits remain viable. These areas may be within or adjacent to areas of city impact or where lands are afforded fire protection, access to standard roads and other services. So, so I have to think that when this zone designation was laid down in this area, even though there were primag soils, they felt that, the, the planning department must have felt that the, there was adequate fire protection, there was access to standard roads and other services. So, so they laid down the AF10 zone in these areas. Now, when you look at the rural 5 district, the rural 10 and rural 5, in the, and again, this is from the last presentation that was done. This is from the staff report. This is straight out of the code. R10 in areas designated as rural residential in the comp plan, characterized by slopes that are steeper than 30%. Located within critical wildlife habitat, which we know it's not. We know it's not characterized by slopes steeper than 30%, contains primag soils. The soil designation does say that, yes. Served by a network or public-private roadways. Yes, there, there is a public roadway there. Within a floodway, no. Contain limited access to public services. So this is, this is when we start to rely on comments from agencies when making these decisions. Moving forward, though, rural 5. Rural 5 in areas designated rural residential in the comp plan that are already developed at or near one dwelling unit per 5 acre density. And do not meet the criteria for the R10 above. So this is when, when we look at this, we also start looking at the neighborhood. Right? Because that zoning ordinance just said that R5 is appropriate where other R5 or 5 acre lots exist. So that's when we start looking at the neighborhood. So okay, from a planning department analysis of this area, let's just look at this property real quick. Above it is a section of state trust land. Over here on this side is US Forest Service. Adjacent here is, is my mouse moving up there?
I can't, no.
Oh, it's not. I wonder if. There we go. So up here is, is the 5 acre zoning. I've gone out, I've taken a drive around this loop. It's definitely 5 acre lots and there are folks that live there and I, no, I understand, I understand. I, I understand. Nevertheless, it's 5 to 7, okay?
Yeah, they're under 10.
There we go. So, um, yeah, sorry, I don't mean to generalize. I get frustrated when people generalize with me. So I apologize. I don't mean to generalize. You're right, it is 5 to. And, all right. This is the state trust land. This is US Forest. This area here is some 10s and some 20s. This is important to show you, okay? This is productive farmland and I would say that there's portions of this that's productive farmland. Okay? Now, I showed you that for a reason. Commissioners in, in state statute, it talks about that. When, when a zone request has been requested, that it be reviewed against the policies of the comprehensive plan. So that's why in our comprehensive plan, we have goals and policies. And again, I know it's not gonna help, but this is one of the biggest challenges with our comprehensive plan, is the goals and policies do not connect very well to land use. They, there's goals and there's policies, but they don't connect very well. Which is why we're working on it. Letter C goes even further and says that they should not be in conflict with the policies of the adopted comprehensive plan, but also that if it would result in demonstrable adverse impacts on the delivery of services by any political subdivision. So this is why it's important for us to receive comments from agencies. We, we received a comment from Spirit Lake Fire Department stating that there would be a 10%, that there's been a 10% increase in vehicle crashes. I don't know what that means. 10% of, 10% of what?
They didn't say 10%, what? Was there one, was there?
Yeah, 10% of what? Okay, I, I appreciate that there is, that that's an increase. I understand that. But 10% of what? See, it's, it's important for us to understand what, what the real impacts are when we're trying to make these decisions. Is it, is it, is it, is it a demonstrable impact? Is it a demonstrable impact? Okay, that's, that's the question. Okay, I, I understand that there's an impact, but we're, we're talking about, hey, we're talking about a change here from 16 to 24 to 32, right? So is it a demonstrable impact? There were no comments from DEQ. There were no comments from AD or IDWR that's talking about the water impacts. There's no comments talking about the concern over some of the comments that have been brought up. There just haven't been agency comments to those facts. So in the comprehensive plan, I, I pulled up the goals and policy section and I did a search on prime farmland and, and nothing came up. Productive farmland came up, which is important. It says productive farmland and timberland shall be identified protected from adverse effects of adjoining developments. Now think about that goal for a minute and think about what we're talking about. Okay, and where we're looking at. Okay, second, Bonner County values its productive ag and forest lands, fisheries, wildlife, wetlands, and provide measures to protect and maintain these natural features. That's been done in the zoning ordinance. That's the purpose of the zoning ordinance. We identify those and we work, we have protective measures through our subdivision process, through our building location permit process, through, through several different codes and ordinances entitled 12 and Title 14 floodplain. Land use, Bonner County will develop, maintain a future land use map, land use codes. We do that. That acknowledges the value of agriculture and timberland, protects water, wildlife resources. And again, we, those things are in place. The, the challenge comes down to applying, applying some of these things when they come to these decisions. Last year, Bonner County rezoned almost 1,000 acres of AF20 zoned land to R5 around these areas, because those requests come in, because we look at them individually, because we look at how they apply on the ground, because we look at all of these details in trying to, to make a recommendation to the planning commission and to the board on, on how the ordinance is, is written and needs to be interpreted. This this change, the, the impact to productive farmland, it, it's across Spirit Lake Cut Off Road, the productive farmland that we identified. So, so the impact is, is across the road. That's your decision, your interpretation to decide is that, is that a big enough impact for us to consider in this situation? Now, the other challenge that, as I, as I went back through the staff report, the other challenge that or difficulty I found were the findings of fact. As, as I go through the analysis that was done, the findings of fact are significantly different than the analysis that was done. These analysis, these findings of fact are important because these decisions are made upon findings of fact and conclusions of law. And that's what the board and the planning commission should consider when making these decisions. And these are facts. These are not made up. They are what's on the ground. The site has no steep slopes of 30%. Bottom line, that's a fact. It's served by Spirit Lake Cut Off of Bonner County owned and maintained road. That's a fact. There's no known hazards. There's no floodway. There's no wetlands. Has no critical wildlife habitat as identified by any federal, state or local agency. There's no floodplain or floodway. It's within the Spirit Lake Fire District. It does have primag soils. That's a fact. The site does not have access to urban water and urban sewer, no urban services. That's a fact. Those are the facts. So does it, do those facts line up with a comprehensive plan designation of agricultural forestry? Staff does not think so. It is definitely more appropriate designated as rural residential. Does it line up with the zone change from AF10 to R5? Those facts right there? When you look at the comprehensive plan and it indicates that rural residential is set aside for small agricultural. What is, what does that mean? What is the definition of small agricultural? Is a 5 acre lot small agriculture, if a family wants to live on a 5 acre lot and, and grow things and have things like that, they can do that on a 5 acre lot. Those things are continually being vetted out through these subarea committees and the comprehensive plan. The challenge is, is that the things that we've prepared so far can't be considered in this because they're not adopted. It'll, it'll probably take till the first of the year before the planning commission is ready with the recommendation on a new comprehensive plan. In the meantime, the challenge that we're faced with is that definition of rural residential and the difference between that and the agricultural forestry and how it lays down. So it, it's hard, it's hard to consider those findings of fact and not come to the conclusion this project is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and it's in compliance with the zoning code based on those findings. The end.
Okay. Jeremy, do you have anything to add that's new? You've already heard your original argument.
Thanks, Commissioner Donald. Just the submission that was sent in and included in the record on that, nothing new. The fact that you had discussed the potential interest of my client of a split zone. And that's a decision that was necessary to accommodate and plan that was workable, but our preferences were the original request.
All right. Is there anybody else? We'll do it in the order that was shown on the board. Anybody in favor that wants to speak in favor of this? See, not anybody neutral? Someone actually be neutral?
Yeah, I don't care. I just showed up. I had nothing to do today, so yeah.
Can I ask for a clarification?
Sure.
Um, there's been two different reports on the split of the acreage on 5, 10s and 20s, whether it's on the north side or south side. I've seen two different reports. Can you tell me what it is?
Can you handle that?
So there probably was a little confusion whether north was south and south was north. Yeah, the, the intent, I think, when the motion was made, it talked about that specifically that the R5 would go against the, the state side and that the the 10s would go against the Chippendale side, where the, where the 10s already are. So the intent was for that it would match, match that subdivision there.
Well, it was one of the concerns that was brought forward. So it seemed like a, a logical compromise is to match what was already there.
Okay, watch comments. Okay, so. I want to, yeah, I want to make sure we maintain order here today, folks. Don't make me send the attorney after you. He's pretty mean. No, he's not really. He's kind of a pushover. Um, so what we're gonna do is I'm gonna go and open it up to public comment now for those opposed, but again, let's limit the comments to the new information because we've already heard your, your comments on the old information or the previous original comments, but if there's something new that you wanted, you want to bet out with this, with the information from from DEQ or what have you, or the information that Mr. Allerton put forth showing you how the comp plan works and how the ordinances work and how they apply it and how they come up with the recommendation. Feel free to step up to the microphone, state your name. We'll give you, Milton, you gonna time this?
Yeah, we can do that, yep.
We'll give you three minutes at the most. Let's try to, if you do have, if you do agree with someone else's comment or what have you, just say I agree with the previous person's comment. There's no point restating it. So who would like to go first?
We have lists.
We have signup sheets. Oh, good. We'll start off with the signup sheets. We don't have to think that. And if you realize you don't wanna make a comment, you just signed the sheet, you thought it was, you wanted to sign in, and all you have to do is say pass and we'll move from there. So let's start with Wayne Martin.
Hopefully not three minutes. My name's Wayne Martin, Priest River. I do hope that you will hear the community. I know that you're listening to what's being said. And I understand the water quality. It takes 10 years to show up with the septic and all. You're also going to be, if you do pass this, setting of precedence for farmland and other things being done. There are 2,000 acres a day in this country that are agricultural land that are being taken away of fragmented, you know, whatever. And I know you guys don't look at the farm situation, but as somebody that has livestock, by taking away that, that means that there's less hay. Less hay means that our livestock end up costing more when it goes to not only you, but everybody else around here in order to buy your livestock. to not only you, but everybody else around here in order to buy your livestock, your meat and all. So, I do hope that you'll, you know, look at that. In any remaining time, I'm passing on to this young lady.
Okay, and what, and what we're gonna do today, folks, just to simplify it, is you can pass your time. One person can pass your time to another, but we're not wanna double and triple up. We wanna make sure we get everybody who wants to speak has an opportunity to speak. So, next person would be Rebecca Wilber.
I'm Rebecca Wilber. I live on the Estates Loop area. My concern, I read the documents that you put up on website and I do appreciate you allowing us to review them and speak again. My concern is that it was someone who oversees surface water issues and surface water was addressed, but I live in that area and there's a lot of water that comes through that area underground. And my concern is now that they've pretty much decimated that property, there's no trees. Trees help the flow of those underground springs and I am concerned for the aquifer in that respect because if you take away those underground springs, it will affect the aquifer and then it will affect all of us. And then if you go and punch a bunch of wells and septic, I don't see how that cannot affect us at some point.
And I think you routed IDWR too, right? We had no comment. So, so I know Department of Water Resources was routed.
I'm very disappointed in the effects that have affected, that happened already with the wildlife because the, there's been a direct change from the activity that they've already done on that property in reference to the elk that we have enjoyed in this area. Thank you.
Uh, Robert, I wanna see Brown. Okay. Um, Grace McCoy or Mr. McCoy? Okay. Um, Twilla Robb. Hey, how about Arlen? Robb?
Arlen Robb, I live on Chippendale. My property directly borders this. I feel like Dom is trying to ramrod this down our throats. They've never come around to the community, talk to the local neighbors, which would have been a good neighbor thing to do. Um, during the previous meeting, one of you guys suggested the five, ten parcel split and the ten. I'm glad there's clarification on that. I still don't agree to the fives, tens, twenties. That's what we all signed on for. That's what's been going. It should be a level playing field, continue that way. Last meeting, there was a statement made that the traffic in the Spirit Lake was not bad and that the new increase in population from this property would be insignificant. I can tell you, traffic is already concerned on the Spirit Lake Cut Off even without any increase in population. On a regular basis, I'm getting tailgated and speeders pass on W O lines. And anyone going from Highway forty-one to Priest River or Sandpoint is using the cutoff as a shortcut. And this includes not only cars, trucks, large vehicles, semi trucks, and adding the population and the vehicles from this new population will directly affect that. As elected officials, you are in place to uphold the law and protect and help the citizen Bonner County, the neighbors of this project, which will be directly affected by the proposed zoning changes. Not to assist in helping big development companies line their pockets with money, create issues and problems, then up and leave, leaving us to hold the bag, which Dom Construct is known for. If you go to their website, the reviews from people who have had them built is terrible. In all these meetings, there's not been a single Bonner County resident that is in favor of this zoning change. And a yes vote from you commissioner sends a clear message that corruption is finally infiltrated Bonner County zoning commissioners and you are personally benefiting from this project.
So, I'm gonna say this one time and the next person that does it, I'll toss. No personal attacks on the, on the applicant, no personal attacks on anyone else in the room. Um, it's unwarranted. It's unproven to a large degree and saying that someone's getting kickbacks or whatever is just pathetic. So, I won't tolerate it. If it persists, we'll clear the room. Pardon me? You know, there's the door. This is our hearing. This is our hearing. This is our, this is our hearing. And I appreciate you voting for me. Part of the, part of the job here is we need to get through this hearing. Sir, we need to get through this hearing and if you lower your public comment until it's your time to speak, then you can stay.
In our public comment ordinance, it's very specific that you cannot be derogatory towards any person. And that doesn't mean just us. It means anybody in the audience. If you disagree with somebody, we're not gonna, we're not gonna allow you to be derogatory toward.
Okay, let's move along then. Rob Lowry? Can you go to the mic, sir? And when you go, when you go to the mic, make sure you identify yourself. You know, my name's Rob Lowry for the record, however you wanna say it. As long as you mention your name, that's good because this is recorded and so.
I'm Rob Lowry. And I wonder why the county didn't find out what ten percent increase in traffic was on Spirit Lake Cut Off. It's incumbent on the county to know that. I bound, I give balance my time to Carmen.
Yeah, you can pass it on to, I'll let you pass it to Carmen. That's fine. Violating my own rules already. Here we go. Apparently, I'm on the take. Okay, Harold Lunt?
I see my manager's department.
Okay. Carmen, you're racking up the time here. It's your turn. Let's see, you've got three, six, nine, and one. Okay, well, I need to know your name if you're gonna give them up. What's your name, sir? Did you sign up on here, Glenn? Oh, Glenn Kitchen. Okay, so you're done. Who else has given her a minute? Sandy, Lesa, gotcha. Okay, who else? Okay, well, I'll just put you down here, Leslie.
I will too. Summer.
Summer, okay. Are you on here, Summer?
Yeah, I should be right under her.
See you. Perfect. Okay. One more, I'm sorry. Gotcha. Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. Okay, so you've got one, two, three, six, nine.
I can get through my.
Well, how long's it gonna take?
A while.
A while?
But I think I'm gonna cover pretty much what everybody's been thinking. So, I don't know if you're liking it.
The new information, right?
Totally. You already have my five page comments from the last meeting. Yes, this is new because of, okay, so, uh, this is more, uh, this, my name is Carmen Correto of Priest River. Uh, this is more than just about the a hundred sixty acres in question. This is about setting a precedent that any developer can just come in and buy up land knowing that two of the county commissioners are going to help them come up with some reason to make it okay to rezone. What the March ten meeting taught me is that the only reason you're holding these public meetings is because it's a requirement. It's the law. These look like rubber stamp meetings to appease the masses, not to actually take anything we have to say in condition. Or you might not like some.
Well, then you need to be careful because I'll shut you out. If you can make factual statements that will give us a reason to either approve or deny this, if you're, if you're opposed, so. We're looking for factual legal statements that allow us to deny this.
So.
Where you start doing personal attacks and claiming that two of us are gonna line our pockets or whatever, then there's gonna be a problem.
Okay.
Okay, so please do yourself a favor and do all of us a favor and try to clean that up.
We'll see. Um, so. When you were, uh, when you were deliberating before, there were no, there was no deliberation. There was nothing really. March tense meeting looked like we had two people for coming, I'm being nice. I really am changing. They won't be changed on YouTube.
Keep in mind, by the way, that we didn't really actually complete deliberation. That's why we're back today.
Right.
So, if you're saying we didn't deliberate, you're right.
There was no deliberation. Um, kind of sounds like what's going on in our federal government, doesn't it? Hmm. We by law have to follow the law regardless of public opinion, one way or another, is what you Commissioner McDonald said in writing as a response to some residents' concerns. Does this seem right to you that a corporation is a person? What law gave the right for a corporation to be a person? It makes no sense to me at all why an LLC should have the same rights as the people who live in the area currently. When a corporation buys some property, it should not be allowed to do anything other than what the area is zoned for. The people who buy the properties from Don Construction LLC should have the same rights as the property owners in the area. Corporations aren't people, period. Though the developer is a property owner, it is with the understanding that he's out to make as much money as he can, looking at the profit margin and won't be an owner for the property for long. This corporation won't be part of the community and the future property owners of their land will be adversely affected by what this corporation wants to do. You say that as conservatives, you stand for property rights, but the private property arguments are heavily weighed to only the developer side of the spectrum and ignore the fact that current rural landowners are having their property values and the context of where they live harmed when smaller lots and subdivisions are created in an area that is currently zoned for larger lots. And if someone did something in the nineteen seventies without getting the approval of the county, it doesn't mean it's okay for you to approve these applications. As conservatives, you should side with the property, private property rights of the people, not of an LLC. This LLC has the right to build sixteen homes on ten acres each. That's plenty. Let the future property owners decide if they liked, if they'd like to try for five acres on an individual basis. But I bet at least ninety percent of them will love owning ten acres. Is the wellness and health of Bonner County not worth arguing over or have a real discussion in front of its constituents? It was obviously pre-decided how things were going to go on March ten. And isn't that exactly what's happening in our country on a national level? Isn't one person with a whole bunch of puppet masters making all the decisions that are adversely affecting everyone in this country? And we're just supposed to go along with it because there was a photo opportunity where things were signed? Don't we right now have a president who thinks that the people of this country don't matter as much as the people he's allowing to come into the country to help him cheat on elections? Shouldn't our vote matter? Shouldn't what our voices say matter because both on a national and on a county level, actual Bonner County residents voted for you to help us preserve our way of life and to make responsible growth decisions? You tricked me with your words and I'm talking to you, Mr. McDonald, yes. Um, you tricked me with your words that I voted for you. You should work for the mainstream media because you're good at covering. And anyways, I was gonna have your saying, actually, I am gonna have your saying because it's really good um, that you said on the March ten meeting. It says, you know, um, covering the poop and making a lie sound like the truth that even when we smell the bullshit, we say, maybe that's all right. Anyway, but that's, anyways, I'm telling you right now, we don't want a Bonner County Biden or in our case Bidens. Instead of selling us out to China, you're selling us out to developers? This is going to be hard for you to hear, listen, and maybe understand. But since you already know how you're voting, there are some things I wanna say to you, to your face about what's going on. And I want everyone to hear this. Wouldn't it be awesome if this went viral? I'm not talking behind your back. I'm not talking to you on Facebook. I'm telling you straight out how things are as I see them. First of all, this whole thing about trying to make us feel guilty and bad about not wanting things in our backyard is a piece of baloney. Whose backyards are we supposed to be worried about? We can't worry about changing the lives of the ninety-nine point nine nine percent miserable people in Africa when we can't even help ourselves, our neighbors, and our community. Trump is right. We need to save America first. In this case, we need to save Bonner County first. Before becoming commissioners, you told all the, you, you all three told all the Bonner County residents, your constituents, that you'd look out for their best interest. I can guarantee that I and all the other people I know would never have voted for anyone with a campaign promise to let developers get whatever zoning they wanted on properties they wanted to develop. When you became commissioners, you swore that you'd do your job to the best of your abilities. I looked it up. Is this the best way you can possibly do your job when more than ninety percent, probably ninety-nine percent of the people who actually live in the area affected by today's decision tell you to vote against these requests? In fact, when your own planning and zoning report first advised to deny these applications, that is before Milton had to go back to check and then fix the report. We're being told.
What was that about rude comments?
Yeah, seriously.
We're being told.
We're way over the line here, Carmen, and I'm gonna cut you off here in a minute, so.
Well.
Milton plainly showed the findings of facts. They're irrefutable.
And he did fix the report.
I didn't.
I didn't.
Didn't fix anything.
You changed everything.
I didn't change anything.
Okay, let's, let's stop. Listen, Carmen, seriously, one more, I'm gonna have to cut you off.
We're being told by Commissioner McDonald that the soil didn't look right, knowing that the previous landowner didn't ever clear the farm that, uh, didn't ever clear and farm the land as he did with the land across the street. And we're being told that the soil can't be prime agricultural land because it had timber on it. And it wasn't even very good timber per Commissioner Connolly's cruising this property before he became a commissioner. And those are your comments from Facebook. But per the U.S. Department of Agriculture Natural Resource Conservation Service definition, all the soil units in Bonner County defined as meeting the requirements for prime agr- prime farmland fall into a level three or four land capability classification for crap land uses, which means that all Bonner County's best soils are somewhat limited. The NRCS soils map indicates the soils that comprise approximately seventy-five percent of the subject parcel also comprise most of the soils on the parcels directly across the road that are being actively farmed. Prime farmland is defined in the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and by the United States Department of Agriculture as the land that is best suited for producing food, feed, forage, fiber, and oilseed crops. The majority of farmland historically starts as timberland comprised primarily of soils that support farming uses. Such timberland is then cleared and cultivated into farmland. The simple fact that a parcel of land is currently covered with timber in no way prevents its future users as farmland if the soils are appropriate to support cultivation. Just because the soil doesn't fall into level one or two doesn't mean it's not prime agricultural soil. And yet, instead of taking these things into account, you didn't like the letters mailed in per your comments because they didn't sound too different from each other? Well, not everyone is a good writer and we all want to write in such a way that what we say is taken seriously. So, because we get together or talk on Facebook to figure out how to phrase things, so you listen to what we say, those things are held against us because we wrote very similar letters? Does anyone else see something wrong with this notion or is it just me? You need to take into account the fact that those people took the time to email and write, tell you what they think, and sign the letters. As long as letters come from different email addresses and home addresses, they need to be taken seriously, even if they do look alike to you. And isn't it amazing how on what seems like the twenty-third hour and the fifty-ninth minute new evidence came about that needed to be considered and we had to postpone the meeting due to a legal due process violation? And instead of making the decision to deny everything on March ten, you Commissioner Connolly, out of the confusion, not sure, came up with an idea to make it so that the Kootenay County-based developer can make more money in an area that doesn't sustain this growth well? I had no idea that it was the job of the commissioners to come up with ways to help out developers fit more houses on a property. And Commissioner Connolly's idea came after some neighbors currently living in the area have said that their wells have dried up and that is fact. Well, guess what's likely to happen this year? Since we barely had any snow compared to last year, do you really think that the situation is going to get miraculously better when more houses are being built? And isn't adding sixteen wells bad enough? Oh, I forgot. DEQ said that they were not worried. This is setting a precedent that you'll just turn over and let corporations or developer money get what they want, even at the detriment of the county you're paid to protect. California, Washington, Oregon, et cetera, didn't turn into the hellholes people are running, rushing to live overnight. All of that started with zoning. Developers were allowed to break up land into smaller and smaller parcels until it became what everyone is running away from. Bureaucrats became dictators and here we are. But Commissioner McDonald says that we won't ever go through what Kootenay County is going through because the Land Use Planning Act has the smallest rural designation. Because the Land Use Planning Act has the smallest rural designations as five acres. Or two hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred square feet. Doesn't that sound huge? I'll do one better. Five acres is thirty-one million three hundred sixty-three thousand two hundred thirty square inches. I found that out too. I beg Commissioner McDonald, as Commissioner McDonald knows. Or the county lawyer can tell him that every law can be changed and just like that, we the people lose our way of life. And let's be clear that the definition of high density has to be looked at in the context of the larger area. In the Huda Valley, most parcels are anywhere from twenty-two hundreds of acres. So five acre lots of division. Create a much higher density than what is normal. And again, laws can be changed and the people currently living in the Huda Valley lose their way of life. And yes, zoning changes made it possible for us to live here in less than three hundred sixty acre parcels. But you can't be thinking that the land can sustain everything, including every cha- zoning change developers want. Most people don't have problems with anyone buying hundreds of acres and living on it. What we're having problems is with is allowing someone to use our neighborhood like their personal piggy bank. Without taking into account our way of life, making fun of our way of life. And wanting to change everything about our way of life so it fits into their agenda to make a quick buck. They leave and the future Bonner County residents who move into those places. Get to deal with the issues that arise from your decision today. But please prove me wrong. I'm not saying that you should deny every zoning application. Families should be able to give their kids someplace to live. I'm saying to seriously consider denying most of them. And to keep tabs on people trying to rezonate into smaller and smaller parcels. Approve only the ones that would really help our county and its current residents. And don't tell me that approving every developer application is going to lower our taxes. Because. No, and this happened to me personally, because I don't care and I, and I've never met your wife. How your nice wife helped you to be able to explain to me. Cause you did, how my taxes were not going to go up in an easy way, which you explained to me personally in twenty nineteen. Commissioner Brashaw was right next to you and he says something like, you can't tell this lady that her taxes won't go up. Sorry, bad accent. I know, I'm sorry. But you were like, they won't go up and guess what? That year, my taxes with no changes. Went up from eight hundred fifty-seven dollars in twenty eighteen to twelve hundred seventy-five dollars in twenty nineteen. Needless to say, it's hard for me to believe you anymore. Almost all the people rushing to Bonner County have been educated by a system that is out to destroy most of humanity. It's a system that's trained us not to look at what is. But to believe in the show and mirrors, the smokescreen that they put out. It's a system that's made idols of people who pretend to be other people like actors and politicians. It's a system where we're told that the right guy won the election, won an election, even when almost no one I know voted for them. It's a system that makes us so many rules and regulations that you almost need a lawyer just to go to the bathroom. It's a system that's. But he said he's not that good of a lawyer, so I'm not sure. It's a system that tries to get everyone to live one on top of the other.
By the way, we'll allow any lawyer, drugs are fine.
I don't have any more, sorry, for the next meeting. Um, I think I ran out of those. Um, it's a system that tries to get everyone to live one on top of the other. Keep everyone in overpopulated areas where they can't thrive, they can't even grow their, they can't grow their food. And they breathe all kinds of stuff in the air. In fact, no one is looking to thrive in densely populated areas. They just want to survive. And everything is so expensive everywhere and nothing is getting any cheaper. The system has made it so that people don't have the time or the energy to worry about anything other than the immediate needs of their family. No.
Carmen, you need to get close because you're running out of time.
Yeah, seriously, Commissioner, we talked about the requirements being that it have something to do with the file. This is just a campaign.
But it really doesn't, doesn't apply here. You really need to stick to the facts.
So I'll, I said, you.
I'll give you one more minute.
I don't know. You as commissioners need to stay strong, deny waiver. Doing what's best for your current county Bonner constituents or residents is paramount. Don't worry about what's going, worry about what's going on in your backyard if you want your kids to have a future. Even half as good as you had, because I can guarantee you that the federal government and the puppet masters behind them. Are definitely not worrying about our backyards. All three of you are public servants. Commissioner McDonald, no one called you guys slaves. Anyone who equates serving the residents of Bonner County with being a slave should not make any decisions for this county. In fact, I truly believe that if you believe your salary. Makes you a slave, then you should resign immediately from your positions, whichever ones you are. Like right now, as soon as I'm done. Sometimes helping your county means making the hard decision. And the hardest decision because of the education we've all received in the last twenty-five years or so. Is not to get onto every expansion bandwagon.
Commissioner, she can submit this and it can go into the record full. Uh, this is, she could have submitted it.
No, but we're allowing everybody three minutes, stop.
No.
Stop. I gave, I gave you three, I gave you three minutes.
So shut up and listen to it.
I'm skipping off.
And I've given you a lot of latitude with your comments.
He has the right to tell her stuff.
But all the people put us where we are and part of our job is to make sure we keep control of the meetings. I gave everyone three, I gave, everyone got three minutes, everyone got equal time. Which three minutes, two minutes, three minutes is the standard. Listen, I'm not gonna have this discussion much longer. You're, you're pushing me to the edge of my tolerance here. Am I giving you repeated warnings? I've let you wander off. I've let you run the board. Yes, ma'am.
Chairman McDonald.
Yes.
I request that you allow her to finish and I ask a vote of the people present, do you want to finish?
Fortunately, especially as someone who's taught constitutional classes, you should know the difference between democracy and a representative republic.
I made a request.
Yes, and I will deny that request.
Thank you very much. Everyone recognizes he denies.
And that's fine. So I've given you more than enough time. You have a closing short statement. Can you encapsulate, encapsulate this into something that's relevant to this file?
Was, so your mission, should you choose to accept it? Yes. Is to stick up for this beautiful county. That you say you all love and that we live in and for all the people who elected you. Deny every part of this request and follow the progress of this project so that those sixteen future residents. And their families have the least amount of issues. And. After looking, I looked into DOM Construction LLC.
Has nothing to do with this.
Anyway, your Bonner County.
An applicant or a property owner, just like we're all property owners, okay? Do not go after an individual in this room. You've been warned repeatedly.
They are not an individual. They're a corporation. They're a company. They're a corporation.
Doesn't matter.
They're not a person.
Regardless, either everybody has property rights or nobody has property rights. I prefer everybody has property rights. So do not go after DOM. Please. I beg you.
You're all.
I'm sorry, what was that? You're not making it easier for us. It's not the way the law works and we'll talk about that at the end. Go ahead.
Are you for the people or for the corporations? You're all being put on notice today and your actions are being observed, especially by, by those of us. Who are working on thriving, not just surviving. The laws of karma are, are unchangeable and are always in effect. So basically, you'll all get, all of us will get what we put out. Again, if you believe. Let me skip that so it's faster. I might not be able to drain the Washington DC swamp, but I can sure work on draining the Bonner County swamp. A swamp isn't drained from the top down, but from the bottom up. And I am pulling the plug right here. As I see it, the purpose of these public hearings is for you as commissioners to observe the position of your constituents. On these applications and to give you the opportunity to modify your decision accordingly. And I don't think most of us people in Bonner County will mind Bonner County taking this fight. To the Supreme Court to make sure that a corporation is never again thought of to be a person. With the same constitutional rights as a human being. I don't mind my tax dollars going to help Bonner County stick up for the rights of we the people if necessary. Please surprise us all here and vote to deny every part of this application.
Thank you, Carmen. Seems like everything else shows up on Facebook.
If you'd like to submit a copy for the record.
If you would, please send a copy so that you have it on the record. For future, just in case you guys, you know, whatever, anyway. So Rob Wilber. So Rob Wilber here?
I don't have a lot about the new stuff. My, my name is Rob Wilber, I live on Stone Pine Road within two miles of this. A few of the statements I made last time. I did. I had a false understanding of how the taxes worked. Thank you for working to keep Bonner County taxes lower.
Last for three years.
Now I understand. It's been going up because of state laws and other tax jurisdictions. I'm sorry, I made this statement. I'm sorry, I made this statement, possibly judging you guys. But I noticed with Mr. Olleton's. Clarification of facts. Um, he mentioned there was only ag on the. West side. Um, the south side has ag bordering. I know there are farms there that actually border this property.
I think those ten acre parcels might have some.
That's the one I'm speaking of. There is agriculture on more than just one side.
Okay, uh. Want to see Michael Stewart?
Michael Stewart, I live in Blanchard. Going to some of the facts that were stated, agricultural forest land. Having been on a farm, raised, born and raised on a farm, thirty degrees slope, you're not going to have agricultural land for very long.
That's, it's a combination of ag or forest.
Right, which I think the meaning was, more of your forested lands to prevent erosion or on your steeper slopes. Your farmland is your good flatland. What we're looking at here is mostly good flatland, which has already been described as prime farmland. There's not enough of it as there is now. As stated, Bonner County has the least amount of private land. Everything else is federal and state. So. Last year, thousand acres were approved for so, uh, rezoning, five to ten acre residential. Now you've got, just this year alone, almost six hundred acres in the same boat. You're taking up a lot of, a lot of good prime farmland and unfortunately, most of that just going away is going away to developers. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Michael. Uh, Maureen Patterson.
Maureen Patterson for the record, and so I guess we can't talk about the sub-area plans that will, because they were. Put together to have the voice of the people and I guess we can't consider those in. But we do have an existing, uh, Bonner County Comprehensive Plan, okay? And I agree with, uh, the lady that said that DEQ talked only about the surface water. That's true. And they should know better. There's a lot of subterranean, uh, creeks that feed into. Who do creek and it definitely needs to be taken into account. Anyway, according to the comprehensive plan that exists now. It was stated that it was not in compliance with Title Twelve Bonner County Revised Code. And not in accord with the purpose of the Rural Five Zoning District, Chapter Three, Title Twelve of Bonner County Revised Code. In the land use chapter of the comprehensive plan. It states it would diminish rural character and natural resources of the area, including this prime farmland soils. It also states that the goals and policies of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan's Community Design Section. Are supposed to support sandy densities and compatible uses. But this application does not minimize the adverse effects of development on natural resources and rural features. This was in the report. These are words from the report. The comprehensive plan states that Bonner County should be committed to preserving, preserving the rural character of these areas. It would not be appropriate is what it stated. Um, planning and zoning, when we had our hearing in front of planning and zoning. They looked up at that map that you showed previously and they said, you can tell that it does not fit. Five acres would not fit in this. Anyway, transportation section of the comprehensive plan. Allowing this amendment would not be appropriate, it stated, since it would allow for potential zoning of five acre minimums. Possibly creating a public health, safety, and welfare problems. Spirit Lake, uh, Fire District Chief, D. Bonardi warned that Spirit Lake Cut Off. Road is already hampered with emergency response. And that there should be a traffic analysis. I don't know if there was. Elected representatives should be concerned about the public's apprehensive voices regarding how the increase. Inseptic systems may negatively impact the local aquifer and the creek itself. And disrupt our agricultural community. There are over seven hundred petition singers. Rural residential zoning in agricultural land invites nuisance lawsuits to farmers. This is what compatible uses means. Too much, you know, they start complaining about too much noise, too much dust. All of a sudden they file nuisance lawsuits and they win over the farmers that have been there for many years. But the law of this application does not deny owners' private property rights or deprive the owner of economically viable uses. Plowing reports states. Doug is giving me history. More, this is exact words from the report.
Want to give yours?
Yes. So anyway, this is, um, this is from the report itself, the planning department's report. Uh, it doesn't deprive the owner of economical viable uses. Nor have a significant impact on the landowners' economic interests. Since it can still be divided into ten acre parcels built upon and sold. There are also a variety of residential, commercial, industrial, public. And resource-based uses in the Ag Forest Ten Zone. So please follow the law as defined by the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. In the form of recommendations of your planning department and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.
Got two minutes.
I might take him at the end.
Okay, take him at the end? It's like an a la carte menu here. Okay, Thomas Lewis. Uh, how about Robert Wheeler? Okay. Rhonda Wheeler.
Rhonda Wheeler, I live on Estates Loop, and we are a prime example of an area that is less than 10 acres and is a mess there. We have too small of a road. It wasn't planned well. It's a very good example of what we don't want. Then my main thing is the hazards, the roads. I would really like to see some planning as far as direction of the roads, that what's going to happen. Spirit Lake Cut Off, Edgemere Cut Off, the way to get to, if somebody's going to go to Sandpoint, they're going to use Edgemere Vay and head out that way. It's gravel, it's a mess, especially in the winter, but they come anyway. And I would like to see those kind of things being looked at prior to letting that many more homes go in, because for every home, you got at least two cars and a teenager, a third car. You've just got too much. We need to look forward to fix things and then put this stuff in place. We're not going, we're putting the cart before the horse. Thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda. Paul. Paul Brannan.
My name is Paul Brannan, I live on Hooton Mountain Road. We access Spirit Lake Cut Off by Curtis Creek Road, and traffic density has increased dramatically. I've been driving it for 40 some years, but there's limited view to the right and to the left as you leave Curtis Creek Road. And it's going to be a hazard, it's going to be a bad accident someday, I think. You can pull out there after looking, and before you even straighten out, you've got somebody on your tail. And normally, they'll say, okay, the traffic density is higher, let's lower the speed limit, which just increases the density.
You know what's funny is every time, whenever we want to change the speed limit, if you want to lower it, we have to do it. The group just do a traffic study. And I haven't seen, the few we've done so far, I haven't seen one that's actually gone down. They always recommend going higher. Shocking them, because it's based on how people are traveling it now, which is unfortunate. Doesn't make much sense to me, but.
I'd like to see them addressing it.
Yeah, no, and they're looking at it. Actually, they're going to be doing traffic counts out there and everything. So, Virginia Brannan. Okay, thank you, Virginia. Frank McMahon, is it McMahon or?
It's McMahon, Frank McMahon. So, I don't really have any prepared comments. I wanted to see what new information came up today. But, uh, you know, by and large, for me, this is just kind of a sad event to where this particular 160 acre parcel seems to be the linchpin to pull everything apart. If, uh, you know, developers get the way that, you know, what they want, in a sense, from here on out. I know for my family and I personally, we purchased out there because of the current zoning. And to see things change, I mean, this is just like I said, it's, this is a bellwether type event. This is kind of the barometer, you know, it's, uh, you're setting the tone for things to come, obviously. And I'm sure you folks have considered that. And when I see, you know, 40 years of experience driving the road, I have two years of experience driving the road. And I'll tell you what, it's, um, it's pretty bad. And the density, I almost, I had to help some people that got in a wreck right out in front of my place last summer, and they were Washington folks going up to Priest Lake. So, it's not just us that drives it, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of traffic on that road. And at the least, I would like to see that infrastructure get a little, a little bit better before we go ahead and, you know, put all these new people out into that valley right there. So I would just, uh, you know, the planning side of it, I'm a little concerned that we're not ready, so to speak, to double the density there. And again, setting this precedence, this is going to keep happening and happening. So, um, yeah, I would just, just have you guys consider that. And I know, Dan, you talked about the law quite a bit last time, uh, two times ago, I guess, when we actually had a formal meeting. And that was, uh, you know, I would think that would be the comprehensive plan, the way that things are zoned right now. And it sounds to me like my property right up the road from it, according to what we found out today, is zoned inappropriately then, because I don't have, you know, 30 acre slopes, but I am ag forestry. So how does that precedent change things out there in that community?
We'll change that next. I'm just kidding, we're not.
Right, no, and that's, that's the deal. And you know, something like the map right here, we're looking at the, the piece of property directly across the street, it's a thousand acre parcel, and we're like, hey, that's prime, you know, uh, you know, far, or ag land over there, but it's the same soil. It's just Spirit Lake Cut Off bisected this land, and it was both the same owner at one point. So, yeah, that's that. And Jeff, I had a question for you. You spoke to a woman back here, and you had said something to the tune of, be careful what you ask for, so I'd like you to speak to that maybe. And then Commissioner Bradshaw, if you could, if you're going to vote the same way that you did last time, I would like to, to see the difference between the law, so to speak, in your mind, versus what maybe these two other gentlemen see the law as. Thank you for your time.
So what I spoke to is that. Relax for a second.
By the way, we don't normally allow applause either, but.
So what, what I was speaking to is that I offered a compromise, and apparently, nobody thinks that a compromise is something that they would even consider. And she said, we don't want to compromise, and I said, well, be careful what you wish for. You can take it however you want.
Okay, so let's move on to Betty. Let's have some more. I want the, sir, would you mind, where's the little hammer thing? Did you do, did you have?
I think, I think it's probably not appropriate.
It probably isn't.
Yeah, not at this point.
They still have to do that deliberation, during deliberation issues, when they justify their decision.
Yeah, we don't want to get in trouble, because it'll, it creates a conflict, so. Betty Irving.
Since the prosecutor's watching.
Yeah, especially when we got an attorney sitting right here, we really got to watch it, so.
I'm Betty Irvine, and I'm on Vay Road. I'm most concerned about the, the roads. So far, every time I've called the commissioners or anything, I hear, it's like, okay, are we going to get these roads paved out here? No, we don't have any money for it. Are all these new homes going to pay for our roads to get done? And I, I agree with, we're putting the cart before the horse. We need infrastructure before we invite a whole bunch of more people. Then our schools are dilapidating, nobody wants to put any money into them. You know, our teachers, we need, we need some good people to take care of this. And then every five, 10 acre piece goes in, anybody that has a little more than that, they're still going to pay on their taxes. It's good, it will affect everybody's taxes, and the more small pieces, the bigger our taxes are going to go up. So, it will affect everybody.
That's all I have in the sign up. Now I got them both. They've got you guys in a great job of getting through this, I thank everybody for the comments, or someone else? Oh, that's right, you were, I told you you could speak. Go ahead. Make sure you state your name.
My name's Tom Pausko, I live on Estates Loop. Incidentally, I do have a cousin that owns two law firms. Used to be a property judge, but he had to decide against his former customers, so he quit doing that. Just running these two law firms. Unfortunately, he's down in Texas. But, uh, most of the roads on Estates Loop. Mine's probably almost 40 years old, never had a bit of trouble. They're mostly surface water wells, they're not deep enough to be in the aquifer. The people that own the strawberry field just put in a new well in the corner of my neighbor's property on their side of the fence. 12 inch diameter casing, they went down 280 feet. So if these new developers don't drain our water table, he will. And I know people that live out there, that the creek runs through their property, and they've been telling me for way before I ever heard of this developer, that the creek has been gradually going down. Guy that lives across the road, Elk Farm, he had, his well was over 20 years old, he had to put in a new well. His was 25 feet deep. The water table over there used to be about that far below the ground. In fact, he even used to be swampy over there. I really can't afford to put in a new well for 20 or $30,000, plus you have to wait. The guy's putting in that well for the strawberry field, said we could work here for, until 2022. That's how many people wells are having trouble. And that's, like I say, I have about over 60 fruit trees, I have a big garden every year. If I have to wait two months to get a well drilled, that stuff will probably all die. That's about it.
Anybody else that wanted to speak, didn't get a chance to speak? Or do we, okay. Why don't you go ahead and light one of them up?
Three, so Christine is turned on.
Hi. Good afternoon. I was just wondering what.
Full name for the record, please.
Oh, yes, Christina Loeb. Um, I'm just curious how the, you know, currently, the District 83 school level didn't pass, and people have been being told their children may have to be bused into Sandpoint. So I'm wondering, um, this, this project cited District 83 as being their school district, and wondered how this also, if they're taking into consideration that problem area, and how does ponder a school district feel about that? And are, do they have, is there any notes on this influx of children coming their way as well?
Um, I can tell you that we, the county only deals with land use, so we don't look at, uh, we don't look at water, we don't look at any of that. So we don't certainly look at schools, they're a separate taxing district, and that's within their authority to figure out how they do that. But did we route to the school district, or do you ever route to the school?
Yep, we did. We routed to the school district.
What did they say?
Uh, no comments. Nothing was, no reply, actually.
No reply.
So.
Ask them directly.
Yeah, well, that's just a concern, because when kids are being told here in my own neighborhood, and I live in Blanchard, that they're going to be shipped up to Sandpoint because this levy didn't pass. So that's kind of an area of concern that I think that should maybe also be, um, looked at. I understand it's just land use, but there are different variables that also go into this, um, thing, and it shouldn't just be land use. Aside from that, aside from that, I think that Maureen Patterson had a great, you know, understanding and expressed my same sentiments, and I just hope that you guys deny the five acre parts. And, you know, this guy can, Dom, can totally make 10 acre lots and make a great neighborhood. And, you know, it'd be, it would fit the area, it would fit the community. It would be less detrimental to, uh, the natural resources that we do have here. I thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
Mike.
Mike, can you hear us? Hello, Mike. Mike? Mike, can, if you have on your end the ability to unmute yourself, you need to do that so you can talk.
Okay, how about now?
There we go, now we got you. Mike, please state your full name for the record, please.
Sure, Michael Hogan, I live on Chippendales. Um, I guess no meeting would be complete without talking about the media a little bit. And what I really wanted to.
Can you speak up a little bit? We're having a hard time hearing you.
Sure, I just wanted to, uh, just wanted to say that, uh, it's, no meetings complete without talking about the, the media and all of this. And I wanted to let everybody know, in case you haven't seen it, uh, the Quarter Lane Press recently did, uh, had a paper come out and where the residents of Cootney County, uh, shot down a $50 registration increase on vehicle registration to improve area traffic flow and congestion. So, um, you know, it's, it's going to cost us money to do all of this stuff, to have more people come to our area. Also, Governor Little, in an interview with Creme Two News, uh, quote, said that we want smart growth for Idaho. And, uh, and you guys are in control of that, and I think everybody who lives here wants smart growth for Idaho. We don't want, we don't want something rammed down our throats. Also, just recently, um, today or yesterday, the Wall Street Journal reported us, Cootney Bonner County area, number one growing in the nation. So we got to be smart about this, um, without a doubt. So, um, we all know too, because we love North Idaho and our freedoms here, that with more people comes more regulation. That's going to happen too. You're going to, you're going to have, uh, problems with riding your ATV down the, down the county road or something, getting firewood, uh, out in the forest lands on the weekend where you have just gobs of people. So we're going to look at things like that coming our way with, with too much growth too fast. So, I really encourage you commissioners, you guys are our people. You're our trusted leaders, you're our voice, our protectors. You must really support us, the residents, the people who live here, and stand strong with us. Don't give in, you know, be us, be one of us. The, the Planning and Zoning Commission already unanimously voted against the change. The families that are going to move to the new houses that Dom wants to build, they are going to appreciate the 10 acre lots. They are not going to want the fives either. So, consider all of that too. I think decision is easy, it's not a hard decision. Show your support for the citizens of Bonner County as we support you in your position. This is exactly why we elected you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thanks, Mike. We have one more. Maya, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, thank you.
Please state your name, full name for the record, please.
My name is Maya Starbright. Garrett Thornton and I own 20 acres on Chippendale Road. Um, I had a couple points, I've been, you know, here for the whole meeting, and I've been writing things down, and I don't, I don't want to beleaguer you, but I do want to clarify that there's more than just that one piece of farmland owned by Mr. Birkencamp. There's many farms in that area, ours is one of them. Then there's Mike Anderson, who's behind us, he owns 120 acres. There's the strawberry farm, there's many, uh, cows and sheep and goats in the area, and I, so I, I just want to state that that parcel of land that's under deliberation right now is surrounded by farms. So that it doesn't show that particularly on the map. It's not just that one side, it's all four. It's surrounded, it's literally like a little island of potential farms surrounded by established or being established farms. Okay, so that's what I want to say. And I, you know, I'm a little concerned about the lack of department feedback on these. Like you guys sent out all this request for information, and, um, and you didn't get anything back. And I guess that, to me, that's an, that indicates something in the system isn't working, and that's not your fault, but I do want to say that, uh, just because there's no feedback doesn't mean it's a good plan. You know, it, it just means that there's no feedback. And at worst, it means that the people that we've put into those positions to do that work and to provide that feedback aren't doing their jobs. But that's a whole nother story, right? Um, yeah, but I do want you guys to just really have that clear in your heads. Just because there's no feedback doesn't mean that the, that's a tacit approval for it, right? So, I, I have a question, and you probably can't answer this now, but I do hope that it gets very specifically answered throughout some of this process and this deliberation. And that is, I mean, we're pretty clear about the perceived and actual disadvantages to this proposed zoning. But I'm curious as to what the actual specific advantages would be for those of us that are already there. And for the county in general, because I think that those are really the priorities, right? The, the, according to the bylaws, the first priority is the people that are already there and established homes. And then, and then the county, you know, what's good for the county. And then, and then after that, like, what are other advantages that could come out of that? So that, I guess that that's kind of where I'm like, okay, so what's the advantage to this? What, what would this solve or bring forth? I do want to say that changing it from an agricultural to a rural residential does change one thing that hasn't been talked about at all in any of these meetings. And it's one of, it's the state subsidies and programs that are used to rehabilitate farms and agricultural businesses. Um, and so, my husband and I, we are actually taking advantage of that. We've planted over 1,300 new trees and have, um, taken out the old dead trees through the, um, agricultural programs that are provided by the state. And the only reason we're able to take advantage. And the only reason we're able to take advantage of that is because of the agricultural and forestry zoning. Right? So if you turn those into residentials, then suddenly that small farm upstart, uh, it's, I mean, you know, it's not like a huge advantage, but it is there. And it's, um, that's taken away with the rezoning.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I need you to wrap it up, Maya. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, and so I guess I, my next question is, for those of us that are opposed to this rezoning, do we have a right to an appeal? And what are the next steps for that? And if that could be addressed, that'd be great, too.
Okay, I'll make sure we cover that.
Thank you.
Okay, so that looks like it draws to the end of the public comment. Milton, can you, there's a couple of things I want you to respond to. They came out, questions that I wrote down here. Um, I think one thing that would be helpful for the public would be for them to understand the, the process. This is the first step in a process. Um, this is just the, looking at potentially changing the zoning and, and, um, and I want you to speak to the, let's say this does go through and, and Dom starts to develop. What are the next phases? Because like, we keep getting asked, talked about, people talk about septic. We don't, that aren't within our control or our, we just look at land use. But, but I want to make sure that they're aware that if this does get approved, there are additional hoops, whether he does sixteen or twenty-four or thirty-two. There's additional hoops that have to jump to, even so much as the roads. I know we required, uh, paved roads, load, you know, loads on the roads, blah, 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 blah. So if you can speak to that, that'd be great.
All right. Well, and if you've, if you've paid attention to this property, he has been, he has been putting in a road, um, down the middle, uh, of the property, it appears. Um, I haven't spoken to them about it. You can put a road on your property. Most people do for logging purposes or whatever. Um, but what, what happened, so this is a request for a rezone. Uh, after this, he could, he could apply for a subdivision, uh, to split the property into whatever number of pieces he chooses to. And once the subdivision process comes in, there's those, it has to be reviewed by Panhandle Health and by the similar agencies, right? Um, in order to, to do that, we pay mostly attention to roads and how it impacts the roads. Um, and so there's still more reviews. Uh, and then, of course, when, when properties start to develop, there's building location permits that, that have to be got as well. Um, so yeah, there's, there's, this isn't over. There's still application process.
The file we had was last week, the week before last, where they came in, they wanted, they wanted to be able to zone it, rezone it to fives, but they were building, they were breaking up sevens and nines. And, and, uh, so it doesn't necessarily mean he's gonna, he may, he may do fives, he may not.
Right.
This is just the beginning process. This only says, okay, you have this, now you have this ability. And then there's what, two or three more hoops they've got to go through.
There are, there are, because the roads come out of that dent, that acreage as well.
Right, so if he, if he increases density, we're going to have requirements for roads. They have to be paved, they have to be able to handle a loaded fire truck, uh, the whole layer. So there's more to this than just today.
Yeah, Quail Ridge is a good example of, a couple of years ago came in for a zone change, uh, to fives. Um, and they, they put in five acre lots and they, they were required to pave the roads to go in there at the request of the fire department. So, uh, the developer.
Yeah, this is all done within their thing, for, in other words, for them to be able to, to, uh, improve that property, they had to do that as a condition. There are conditions that gets put on by planning.
The road's getting out there. We're gonna have to upgrade them.
So.
When our traffic goes up, we gotta upgrade.
Well, and that's, that's up to our road and bridge department to deal with. Go ahead.
Well, and, and, you, you know, I appreciate the comments on the road. Uh, you talk to any planning department, uh, in the country and they'll tell you that they always tell the elected officials to build the roads first, but they never listen. It's because, it's because it costs money, correct? Yeah, right. Roads, roads cost money. Those, those, there, there's a, there's a factor to that, and that's all part of the planning process. And, and the growth that we're having, we had, we anticipated it to some degree because we started the planning process and working with the communities to, to update the comprehensive plan. There, there's no doubt, uh, that we were aware that this was coming, but not to this degree. Uh, there are issues that are going to need to be addressed. And I think that the board is trying to address that. They've, they are considering ways to improve the roads. Uh, they, they talk about it on a regular basis with the road department. Yep, they do. No, written plan, right. They do have a road transportation plan, uh, down in the, in the road and bridge department. So, but planning also considers a transportation plan as well. So tho- those things are all being worked on.
Uh, I also speak to right for, right to appeal.
So.
I want to know.
Yeah, um, after, after, if the, whatever decision the board makes, either party has the right to, uh, file an appeal. Uh, there's fourteen day, good time period to file what's called reconsideration. That's in our code and state law. You have to file for reconsideration, asking the board to reconsider their decision based on, uh, certain deficiencies uh, in, that you identify in the, uh, in their decision, in their findings of fact and conclusions of law. You can ask them to reconsider that decision. They have sixty days to decide whether or not to reconsider that. Um, after the sixty days is up, there's twenty-eight days to file for judicial review. The board may choose to hear that reconsideration. They may choose to let that sixty days ride out and, and choose not to reconsider it. So, um, that's their decision. And then, and then it can go, uh, to judicial review. Um, I appreciated Maureen's comments probably the most because she did what Dan asked. She talked about the facts of the case. Okay, now, the, the, those were, those triggered me mostly because of the staff report. And she's right, those comments were in the staff report. The unfortunate thing is that those comments didn't come into the findings of fact. And, and it's the findings of fact and conclusions of law that the board makes their decisions on. Um, and that is the challenge with this. And commissioners, the, the decision that you need to consider is, is the language in the comprehensive plan and the language in the law and the language in the zoning ordinance. And, and, um, understand, if, if I could just pull this up on the map, un- understand what the request is. And I'll see if I can turn this on and then I'll back out of here. So this is, this is the parcel that we're talking about right here. And it's currently zoned agroforest, agricultural forestry ten. And the request is to change it to rural five. And, and the, the challenge is, is that, um, it creates some differences. And you'll see that over here. You'll see a rural five. And you'll see these rural fives popping up. And you'll see these rural fives popping up in this ag forest twenty. And it's because of the things that were talked about, the growth and the demand. The county is currently issuing building location permits greater than we're creating new lots. That means that we're filling in subdivisions that were created in two thousand eight when, when the last crash happened. Uh, and, and so how, how long will that continue? I don't know, with the price of lumber and the, the availability of contractors, probably not very long, but you never know. And so we're, we're definitely growing and the growth needs to be addressed. And it, it needs to be addressed in a manner that's appropriate. To make a property owner wait for a comprehensive plan amendment to be updated is, is not really fair. I think a decision needs to be made. And of course, I'm, uh, that's the planning department recommendation. You should probably hear from the applicant if there's any rebuttal as well. But, um, as far as, that's what the request is, is here, is to, is to make that, make that change.
One last thing, Milton, there was comments about Primax oil and, and I, if I recall in your, uh, when you were talking about R five, R five does have Primax oil. It was R ten that did not necessarily have Primax, right? Am I wrong?
Yeah, it's, it's the, our, our ten does recognize Primax oil. Our, our five does, well, it doesn't necessarily call it out specific, right? Right, it calls it out as, um.
It's not exclusive that it can't be or shouldn't be or.
Right, because again, you look at, you look at the, the history of R five around the county. There are definitely R five areas that have Primax soils.
Right.
Because again, in, can, in, to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, rural residential allows for small agricultural uses.
And five, and five acres falls under that rule.
Right.
Does the, uh, owner's representative wish to make any statements?
Yeah, those two, it's gonna be, um, lots of.
I know. You're not, you're not gonna talk about buying.
About an hour or so.
You want this?
No, not by them.
Try to, try to keep it, try to keep it within limits. I mean, so just so everyone knows, the applicant gets an opportunity to respond to any statements made. And that's, and he gets the time, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, uh, no, thank you commissioners. Jeremy Grimm, Whiskey Rock Planning and, uh, Consulting. I, I really just want to preserve the right of, um, my client here. Uh, I appreciate the, the comments that this is not a representative democracy. Uh, we, uh, live in a country that's, um, governed by the rule of law. Um, that rule of law provides my client due process to, uh, seek this rezone. Um, this rezone is, um, guided by the standards of the county. Um, the county uses the comprehensive plan, um, as its kind of goalpost for these decisions. Um, state code states that, um, these decisions need to be made in accordance with a comprehensive plan, and that's a little bit vague as we all can understand based on our position or employer. Um, you know, when you look at the comp plan, the staff report, sort of, uh, in my opinion, cherry picks one or two elements where, uh, there's some subjectivity, uh, on our application. I, I would emphasize that it fails dramatically to emphasize all the areas in the comprehensive plan that I'll name in a moment, that this application is consistent with those goals and, um, priorities, such as, um, that it's going to allow for community growth under population, that it's going to provide multi-economic diversity throughout Bonner County, under economic development, financial health of the community, which we know we need housing for our employers. Under land use, that it's going to balance these challenges that you have to make decisions on. And it's going to encourage the community to grow. This is from the comprehensive plan. It says we are going to encourage Bonner County to grow. Furthermore, it says, um, that we're going to provide diverse housing needs that are to be addressed to provide adequate shelter for all, regardless of age, income, or physical ability. So in closing, uh, commissioners, I know, uh, you never have easy decisions and I appreciate the time before you today. Um, I appreciate everyone who comes out today. I've been on the other side of this as a professional planner. Um, and, uh, I just ask that, uh, you do consider your comprehensive plan holistically and recognize that we're talking about sixteen additional, uh, lots, uh, to what can already be under the standards developed at, uh, thirty-two. So unless you have questions, thank you for your time today.
Do the commissioners have any questions for either staff or the owner's representatives? I do not.
I was gonna ask our attorney something. Um, there's been a continuance of people that continue to say that this can't be done lawfully. And they, and they point to our comp plan and our ordinances, but I think what Milton has shown is they can be done. And, you know, I mean, it does, it, it isn't what the statement is, it's not, not factual.
Your question, you're saying?
Explain it.
Explain your question. Okay, so the way I understood your question is based on an analysis of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, is it legal to process this application just at first blush?
Yes.
If you answer that question, yes. So what your obligation in this proceeding is to make a reasoned statement um, based on facts in the record. That's what would be looked at if it were on judicial review, right? Um, have broad discretion to do that so long as you, the review of the, um, applicable, uh, comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance lines up with that. I think Milton's presented, um, an adequate showing to say, yes, it is legal if you choose to do that. Um, there are facts in the record, um, supporting both a, an approval and a denial. Um, in those cases, the board is given wide latitude to make the decision that you feel best based on the criteria that's most important to you. And typically a court would defer to your findings of fact, um, in the record, um, or the, the, those things in the record that you are most, uh, passionate about. Even if there's conflicting evidence in the record that could support one decision or another, so long as yours is based on reasonable evidence, then the court would allow that to stand. That answer your question?
Yes, um, the other, one other thing is that it was my idea to come up with a split, or a tens on the, uh, south side and fives on the north side. And has that muddied the water some? Should I, I mean, should, are we really looking at, it's a yes or a no? It's a fives or it's a tens or?
I think the board has latitude to, to deviate from the proposal. That's why we had the additional hearing in the first place, because it was a material change from the, the application that was presented by the applicant. You have, you can go away from that so long as you provide everybody the public notice and opportunity to be heard on it. Um, if now there's more than one option, you know, eventually one of you will have to move, uh, either for denial, um, approval of that amended proposal or of the original proposal, and you guys can vote on it. Um, depending on, you might piss off one or the other or both of the parties in this matter, depending on which one of those.
It seems like.
The people who's in the voting.
So that, that would be, you have those options and, um, you know, you could accept the, the kind of middle road plan, but then, um, anybody who is agreed by that decision could initiate, um, you know, the further review that Milton spoke about, because it would actually prejudice the rights of perhaps the applicant as well, because he's not getting exactly, or the company's not getting exactly what, what it wants.
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
Okay. So with that, we're gonna go and close, um, public comment and we will move into deliberation. And I want to start out by trying to cover some of the things. I got a bunch of notes from folks here. Um, uh, we already talked about taxes not going up for the last three years. Um, I'll give you a short rundown of why your taxes may have gone up. So one of the problems we have right now, and this doesn't really apply to this, but I want to give you, give you that since you're kind of talking about it. Well, we, we're in a market now where commercial's staying relatively flat and residential's increasing in value. In two thousand eight, it was the opposite.
Plus ag forest.
Yeah.
Ag forest is even going down.
Yeah, ag forest exemptions are, they're paying less, which means you're paying more because of the ag forest exemptions. Um, but commercial is going, is, is not going up, it's staying down. Um, um, the assessments on residential going up, and so that's creating a tax shift. We're hoping the legislature is going to fix that because we have not. And it's a matter of fact, we have not taken a single penny more than we, for the last three years than we took four years ago. So those, so the taxes, what we're getting are flat. Now, we don't technically get more money when there's more inventory. What it does is it spreads out your tax burden, so when there's more inventory, meaning more houses, which means it reduces your overall take if we keep taxes the same or, or only grow by the, grow taxes by the, by the amount of new construction, which we don't plan on doing that. We've been using new construction to offset inflation, so we don't have to increase taxes. Uh, road requirements to develop, we do have a road plan. Um, we published it earlier this year. Um, we were talking about doing, wanted to pave a lot of the roads like Vay that is, is a problem. Uh, we're seeing a lot more traffic in Vay. We're seeing a lot more traffic down, uh, Clagstone Cut Off. And so we've got a plan to start dealing with those roads. Um, we've got a ten-year plan. We're gonna try to hit as much of it as we can. It's gonna be probably running a series of two-year levies. And again, this has nothing to do with the file, but there are questions that came up. So I want to make sure you guys are aware, because this is a great opportunity to tell you about it. But, uh, it's something that we're actually, you're actually paying for it already, because we're spending a lot more money maintaining these gravel roads than we ever have because of the increase in people. So we can either continue to spend a bunch more money and still have gravel roads, or we can start paving some of the collectors like Vay, like, like, uh, Clagstone Cut Off, Clagston Cut Off. Um, Spear Lake Road is, or all the, all those roads in that area have become crossroads for the entire county. People going from east to west, people coming from Cootney County that live here and work down there, work, or work here and live down there. So anyway, so we do have a plan on that and we're, and we're aggressively going after that. Um, let's see. Water issues, again, water schools, septic, all those things are not within what we have authority over. They certainly become, that's why we go out for comment to all these different agencies. Whether they review those or not, I have to think they do because. I have to think they do because we have had files that have come back and said, hey, based on what we see with this plan. We are, we are speaking out against it. So we have had agencies come back and tell us not to. And everything, that's everything for Roden Bridge, which is in here. Um, to all the way up to, uh, IDWR. EQ Panhandle Health. And again, I want to repeat what I had Milton say is that this would be the first step. He still has three more hoops. I think it's three more hoops he's got to jump through and, um, once they come up with a plan. Because we don't have a plan other than he wants to just change his own. Um. Uh, rural character, rural character. We have, we have, do you know how many five acre parcels we have in the county?
Oh, I do not.
Yeah, I mean, it's thousands upon thousands and they're all, they're all rural, rural designated. So it's, lo, most of them are small farms. So the five acre versus ten acre thing is really kind of too large and really irrelevant.
Can I revisit the ditch?
Uh, not right now. We're, we've closed for public comment, but if you want, we can talk about it afterwards. Um, density. So when we start talking about density, although you may believe density is relative, what we look at is what is density based on how, how planning looks at it, how the land use planning act looks at it. And then there's urban density, which you see down in Cutie County, which hopefully we never become as long as we keep five acres. And that's why it's important to elect good commissioners. We'll never become that, but when you get into urban density, which is within city limits, that's when you start seeing the five and six homes per acre, fifty-eight hundred square foot loss compared to five acres, which is two hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred. Yeah, I had to use a calculator for that. Um, the other concern I have, two, two concerns, I talked about this last time. Cause I know a lot of the folks in this room, and I know a lot of them are either lean to the right or, or fairly conservative. As we start talking about someone making a profit. I don't know when capitalism died and we ushered in socialism or why it's bad to make a profit because we all go to, most of us go to work. Um, most of us have had businesses that we made a profit on. Is that really a bad thing now? I, I, that kind of disturbed me. I don't know if it's something Biden brought in. I had to throw Biden under the breast one time because I haven't had a chance to do that lately. And then private property rights. Private property rights are something that's found, um, in the Federalist Papers, uh, in constitutional writings, in the state constitution, in, um, land use planning act. Um, and basically what they say is a property owner, they don't define it, whether it's a corporation or an individual, has certain rights. And these are rights, these aren't wants, these aren't, um, you know, I get mine, you don't get yours. These are rights. So either we all have rights or none of us have rights. Um, to give you a, a personal example, we've got a big chunk of property over five hundred acres. We have it all timber. Um, we just had the land north of us sell a hundred and sixty acres. I should have bought it. I should have gone out on a limb, taken out a loan and bought that. That went from some fives and sixes and a few twenties to now mostly fives. So I'm impacted just the same way. I know I've seen some things on Facebook. Well, it's not in the commissioner's backyard, so they don't care. No, it's happening in our backyard as well. Um, it's happening everywhere. Um, what can we do about it? Well, the constitution allows for, uh, freedom of movement. People can move where they want, as much as we'd love to put up gates on the, on the county and not let anybody new in. Either we believe in the constitution or we don't believe in the constitution. Um, and we take an oath to, to obey the constitution, support it and defend it. Um, so we have to allow movement. Now, if we get a couple of good winners, maybe the whole scene changes. I don't know. I know a lot of people haven't seen winter here yet, so. Um, these are just a few things, um, circling back now to the law. And you've heard me talk about the law. I talked about it last time. Some people have mentioned the fact that I talked about the law. So when we talk about the law, what we look at is we look at the, the US Constitution, the Idaho Constitution. We look at the land use planning act. We look at our own ordinances and our comp plan. And we have to follow what it says in there. If we don't, one of the things we get trained on early on as a commissioner, they talk, talk to you specifically about planning hearings. How important it is that you follow the law, don't get caught up in emotion, look at the facts on the record, look at the findings of facts, which you've seen, uh, presented a few times here. And that's what you really need to make your decision based on. And if you don't, it creates a world of hurt. There was a county in the Southern, I know I've told this story last time, and if I did, bear with me. They had a yearly budget of seven million dollars. There was a manufacturing plant that wanted to move in there and a bunch of citizens got angry and didn't want it. And so the commissioners listened to the, to the loud voices. Um, loud voices are great. We want to hear them. That's why we have hearings. Um, but they sided with the loud voices instead of the law. That county got sued for nine million dollars, two million over what they bring in every year and spend. Plus the, the facility still went in. The commissioner's made a fatal mistake that cost all the taxpayers a couple of million bucks. Easy, actually more than that, because you figure that seven million was already allocated, so it cost them an extra, yeah, a total of nine million dollars. Um, these are things that we are always mindful of when we're looking at these files. We do not look at these involved. We don't look at the county and say, okay, where can we subdivide some more property? These things, as Milton said, come in on a one by one basis. They come in, we review them. We either reject or accept them. Sometimes they don't even make it to us. They get rejected further down and they don't get appealed. And sometimes they do get appealed in the case of this. But it's incumbent upon us and you can, you can hate us, you can not like us, you can not even vote for us again. And I understand that, but we've taken a note to follow the law and to do anything but follow the law. Um, we would not be doing our jobs and I would hope that you would lose respect for us if we didn't do our jobs properly. Um, but based on what I'm seeing in the, in the additional information from DEQ, um, that answers some of the concerns, um, with our road plan and with the, uh, the findings of facts. I would have to say that we have no choice but to approve the, the five acre, um, five acre designation. And I'm sorry if you don't like it. I just, you know, I wish I had better news. If I had, if I had no integrity, I would sway like a, like a, like a blade of grass. But I've got to maintain my integrity and I got to follow the oath that I've taken. Mr. Conley?
Okay, well, you've covered a lot of things.
I think, I take good notes.
That are on all of our minds. Um, one of the things that we hear a lot, and I'm going to talk a little bit philosophically here, is that for some reason, you folks think that we benefit from something like this. Do you think this is a benefit to me to sit in front of you folks and be called basically a thief? And to question my integrity, it's, it's no benefit to me. I've got lots of things I could be doing that would suit me a lot better than this. And it's quite offensive, actually. I've lived here my whole life. A lot of you folks are new to this area, don't know me. I know quite a few of the people that are in here. And I cherish the fact that I do have integrity. And I think that when I get questioned on that, it's offensive. So on to the legalities of it. Um, I thought that by offering up half of it so that, okay, we, we considered what Chip and Dale was talking about. Hey, I didn't buy something that was going to be next to five acres. It should have been ten acres. Okay, let's fix that. That's what my job is, is to look for fixes for this stuff, not just to sit up here and say yes or no, or just say whatever. We're going to go, we're going to move on. So that's what I was doing. And, and, and I, I think it, it's aggravating to just see people like, no, no compromise. Forget it. We want tens and that's all we want. That's those fives along that northern boundary, along a section of state land. I don't know what the effects those would have on a lot of you folks. I mean, I could talk to the, uh, Spirit Lake Cut Off. I travel it quite often myself. Um, there's increased traffic, but it is also one of the best arterials in Bonner County. I mean, it truly is. I mean, I'm sorry, but you got one of the best roads around as far as the Bay Road and, um, I'm not sure why anybody would go across Edgemere and down Vay to get to Sandpoint. But I guess if that's what you want to do, you can take the scenic route, but I would just go down Spirit Lake Cut Off and go across them. Okay. Um, so back to the, the decision at hand. I still think that the best solution is the compromise. It takes it from thirty-two to twenty-four. That is not an obnoxious number. As a matter of fact, it's eight off of what ten acres would be. And I think that what we see sitting up here anymore in the last six to eight months is no growth. Not in my neighborhood. We don't want to see it. You're going to change my life. Well, guess what? Like I said, I've lived here all my life. So a lot of you folks have came, came in during that time. I also said, whoa, early seventies, uh, late eighties. There was, there was growth spurts like this all along and a lot of you folks came on those spurts. Um, so, yeah. We don't always want to see growth, but I mean, there, Bonner County is going to grow. That's just the way it is. Beautiful place. Everybody loves it, right? Love it to death. The problem is, is things like smart growth. What a catchphrase, right? What does that mean? You, you identify what smart growth is. Everyone in here would have a different version of what smart growth is. We love smart growth. Let's do some smart growth around here, but I mean.
I'm going to do that tomorrow.
We, we truly think about all of these things. I know that, that it's, it's hard for you to comprehend that, that we don't have a stake in this. That just because we're apparently not listening, we're listening, we hear you, we hear you loud and clear. It's been pretty apparent over the last few months that this is a pretty important thing to everybody. But we also hear these same things everywhere in Bonner County. This is not just in the Hootie Valley. This is, you know, I mean, we, we have these places and, and nobody wants to see it. Sully Valley doesn't want it. Hootie Valley doesn't want it. Nobody wants, Priest Lake doesn't want it. So I'm just not sure where the smart growth is going to happen. And that's, this is the, these are the problems we have. And then we get, well, we elected you, you need to do what we said or we'll unelect you. And I'm like, I'm fine with unelecting me. If that's what you feel you need to do, come sit where I sit. Try to make these decisions. I dare you. Well, I'm fine with it. You can take this, you can, you can take this seat right now.
She did, she did say that I could step down after.
Yeah, I know she's daring us. I know she's daring us. But the truth of the matter is, none of this is taken lightly. But it's offensive to be accused of being on the take or less than. Uh, you know, having integrity. I just can't take that stuff.
And I want to, I want to throw in, before we go to Commissioner, uh, Bradshaw, I want to throw in one more thing that I forgot to say. One of the things that the first, at our first hearing is I was, I've always, I've gotten used to the great work that planning does. Planning does a fantastic job. They give us these, these reports and they go through and they, they itemize everything and they list out every issue and, and, you know, give us the reports from other agencies. And the findings of facts always match what's in the report. That first report that we got, I was a little bit shocked because I'm going, wait a minute. The findings of facts stay approved, but the narrative in some of the pieces of the, of the actual report stood just the opposite. And I couldn't help but think there was some potential bias from the, the planner that worked on this originally. Um, and it kind of bothered me because we rely on them to do all the extensive work. I mean, and they give us, I kid you not, they give us files that are so complete that almost all of our questions are answered before we can even ask. This was the first one that I read and I went, there's something not right in that original report. That's one of the reasons why we told Milton, will you drill down to this thing? Cause something doesn't smell right here. And we don't want to make a decision with, um, with findings of facts that disagree with the report because then we end up in court. Um, and we, and we don't want to do that. We don't want to spend any more of your money than we have to, or else we have to raise your taxes. Um, so, um, so that was one of the things that really drove me nuts. This is the first one I've ever seen where there was conflict within the report itself. Usually they're very succinct. It's okay. Here are all the, here's all the information. Here's all the agency reviews. And here's our, our comprehensive amendment finding of facts. And that's what we look at. We look at those findings, facts, we read them. Okay, does it hit this, hit that, hit that? Boom, it hits them all. Um, and that bothered me. I've never spent more time on a file than I've spent on this one. And that's outside of responding to emails and that and, and, you know, I mean, this one was really, uh, it's, it's a struggle. Um, and it's more so a struggle because I think the original product was a little tainted, which is now being corrected. Um, and I think that gave a lot of bad information out to the, to you folks in the public, that if you would have had the, the correct report to begin with, if there wouldn't have been that tainted report to start with, it might have made more sense. Planning is a difficult, difficult, difficult thing to master and none of us have got it mastered, but we've gotten pretty good at going through these reports and going, okay. This makes perfect sense. We follow the law. That's what we do. We always follow the law. We'd love to take public comment, but we can't let opinions that, that want, that ask us to violate the law, um, sway us. Cause if we do, then, then we're no better than the current president. So, sorry, off my soapbox now. Go ahead, Steve.
Oh, and I guess from, just to close, uh, I still support the, uh, split, the tens on the south and the fives on the north.
All right, as elected officials, we were hired by y'all. We are paid by y'all and we are the voice for y'all. That is part of our job. We have laws and statutes, federal, state and local that we have to follow and we have to stay within. It's like Bill said, we do have certain leeways in different areas. The original determination by planning and zoning, their recommendation was a denial. And I agreed with them based on anything not coming forward that was different. I haven't seen anything come forward that would sway me to change my mind on that. My commitment is to people who live in Bonner County, not to people who would like to live in Bonner County. Once they live in Bonner County, my commitment goes to them, but until then I'm committed to the county and the people of it. Uh, I think to approve fives, where you've got federal land on one side and tens across the street, would only set precedence to do more of the same and something that is currently and has for a long time been tens. Uh, I think it would show a lack of integrity, a lack of forethought and a lack of, uh, ear to the people who pay you. And, uh, so I will maintain my course and stay on course with my previous decision. And it was ten acres when Dom bought it. He knew what he was buying. He knew what he is looking at. If he didn't, then that would be, uh, disclosure issue that he would need to take up with his Realtor and not with this board. Uh, I will stay my course and, uh, my motion would be to deny.
Sounds like people speaking.
Okay, so if we choose to do the ten and five.
One of you guys could be.
Well.
For that, well, there has.
I think Dom, I think Dom has, uh, expressed that he's not interested in doing it, the split.
I'm interested in five.
That's six.
But it was, the record is there. Whether or not he's agreeable to it, you guys get to approve, uh, you can, you can approve or, and one can make the motion to that will be the finding or the conclusion of the board. And then the parties can do with that what they wish. Um, but Steve is, his voice is positioned that he's not willing to, moving, move to deny. Um, if one of you won't second that, then the motion will.
Yeah, but he didn't go through an official motion. So if that's his official motion.
That's just his position.
But I will.
He can, certainly. Um, if, but if either one of you agree to go along with that, then the motion would not carry. Um, and then one of you could move to, uh, you know, to approve the amended, uh, the proposal as amended by or presented by Commissioner Conley. Uh, for the split zone concept. I think that would make the, I think that's how that would go.
Well, I'll go ahead and tip it then to Mr. Bradshaw. Commissioner Bradshaw, do you wish to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to deny the project file AM zero zero one eight dash two zero, requesting comprehensive plan amendment. Or do we want the original?
Um, you can use this one.
Okay, the new one they gave us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, file number AM zero zero one eight dash two zero, requesting a comprehensive plan amendment from ag forest land to rural residential. Based upon the following conclusions, refer to the following conclusions of law and, and specify which conclusions the project meets and fails to meet. The decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time staff report was prepared. And based upon the evidence testimony received at this hearing, I further moved up following findings of fact and conclusions of law as amended. This action does not result in taking a private property action. That could be taken if any to obtain the zone change is to file a new application with the planning department and meet standards required by Bonner County revised codes. Or pursue such remedies as may be applicable at title sixty-seven, chapter sixty-five, Idaho Code.
Okay, um, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
So it's, uh, does. So if it, uh, doesn't get a second, it dies.
Do we have a second? I'll ask one more time. Is there a second on this?
The second must come from one of them.
Hearing none. Yeah, she volunteered to be.
Yeah, that's true.
Hearing none, then the motion dies. I will now entertain, um, any additional motions.
Well, the motion that I would like to make is for the split. Um, and it's, it's not in the motion, so.
Commissioner, I would, I recommend that first you consider, are you going to split the comprehensive plan designation as well as split the zone? Or are you going to be consistent with the comprehensive plan amendment and split the zone?
Um, a little more information?
Good question.
Um, I, so that's why I brought this up beforehand is to try to see what I was creating by going forward with this.
Well, and, and, and that's what I spoke to in my presentation, but did not state specifically. Cause I speak. Let me, uh, let me pull this screen up. Map here and I'll show you. Apologize. Here we go. So in, in looking at the map, we talked, the, the request or the consideration was to split it down the middle and consider the north half being one zone R five and the south side being a different zone, uh, 10 acre minimum. So, so if you, if you leave this designation the same uh, and leave the AF ten in place, I don't believe that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance based on the fact that AF ten does not recognize primag soils. Nevertheless, that, that is, that, that can remain the same and you can make the motion and apply the comprehensive plan designation and the zone change only to the, to the north half of the property. You can do it any way that you would like.
So Bill.
Can we check up on it? Have you, this is. It, it does create a dissonance between, if I'm saying that properly. Yeah. Between the, the comprehensive plan and what you're proposing for telling that. Um, again, I think Milton would agree that sometimes uh, similarity between those two zoning designations make them close enough that they both can exist.
Yep, they can both exist.
And so that's, and if that's the compromise position that you're willing to take, um, then that I think is supported by the evidence and the record and your interpretation of the comprehensive plan that you're willing to take. Um, so I do think that, um, that would be appropriate.
He just said what I did. You can go either way.
It would make half of it fit better than it even did before because now it's bordered up to a huge piece of federal land that we know ain't going nowhere and they.
State trust land. Yeah.
I don't know what your point is.
That's state.
This is state.
It's state land and um, of course it's, it's that way it can't affect anybody because a lot of people are saying this has an effect on me because I don't want to be next to the five acre parcel. So who's it affecting?
Well, how many times have we sat in this room and discussed the same thing all over the county? And while it doesn't fit or it does fit. You can take a shot at that one if you like.
Well, I already have. I can, I can justify five acres to tell you the truth. Yeah, right there, right there, right there and right there.
Yeah. And if you go back and look at how that was plotted, you can take a shot at that one too.
It, it's regardless, irregardless of how it was plotted. It's what it is on the ground.
So one board did it wrong once before, so it's okay now.
Wasn't done by a board. It wasn't done by a board.
It, it's still on the ground.
To adopt the original, the original. And Jeff, if you're willing to say that and vote on that, then that avoids this problem as well. So there's another option.
Jeff Ball's in your court.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, you just can't, you can't win because it's pretty obvious that nobody wants this to be split at all. Um, well, that might've been a smokescreen to say that, hey, we, we don't want to see 10 acres next to us. I don't know what it was. I took it at whoever said it's word and the, and what I read in the emails is like, wow, if, you know, this should only be tens against uh, Chippendale, the subdivision that's already there. I acted accordingly. I guess I don't have any integrity left, which slightly pisses me off.
Compromises are good sometimes, but.
Apparently not today.
All it did set precedent to come back and change the tens to fives. Cause now they're bordering fives. Not, not that Dom would do that. Some, some other developer that buys him out like.
Um, so anyway, here we are. I'm, I'm struggling whether I just make the motion for all fives because it just doesn't seem to matter which way I go.
It, it, well, I, I get concerned.
The compromise is apparently not going to make anybody.
Yeah, I get worried when we start compromising the comp plan on a split zone. We've dealt with some of those split zones before. They were problematic, so.
Are you breaking the law by voting?
No, we're not. Yeah, we aren't, but yeah, sorry, some. Yeah, I think it's bitter. I'm just going to do all fives. That's that way we don't have that compromise that even though it's within our ability to do it, five is tense.
Yeah, just talk me into it, I guess. I mean, apparently compromise would set us up for more compromise. So we won't compromise. Um, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this project file AM zero zero one eight dash two zero, requesting a comprehensive plan amendment for, from ag forest land to rural residential, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County. Comprehensive plan in Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time of staff report was prepared and testimony received, I further move to adopt the following findings of fact, conclusion of law. As written, this action does not result in the taking of private property.
And can I have, also bother you to go ahead and read the, the, into the record, the comprehensive plan amendment finding of facts?
Okay. The site has no steep slopes of 30% plus, does have a small portion of 15 to 29% slopes present. The site is served by Spirit Lake Cut Off, a Bonner County owned and maintained road. The site has no known hazards. The site has no known critical wildlife as identified by federal, state or local agencies. The site has no flood plain or floodway. The site is within the Spirit Lake Fire District. The site has prime farmland soils. The site has, does not have access to urban water or sewer.
I will step down from the, well, I'll call for a second. Is there a second?
No, there's not.
Okay, then I will step down from the chair in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
So the ayes have it. Now, if we can go to the comprehensive plan resolution, we have a resolution number forty-two, twenty twenty dash forty-two?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-two, amending the Bonner County projected land use map.
Okay, and I'll call for a second. Hey, I will step down from the chair in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion. Oh, all those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes. Um, zone change.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the project ZC zero zero one five two zero, requesting a zone change from agriculture four three ten, AF ten to rural five, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and the Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based on the evidence submitted up to the time of staff report was prepared and the testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the following findings of facts and conclusions of law. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
Okay. And looking for a second. I will step down from the chair and second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Okay, ayes have it. And now the zone change ordinance motion.
Chairman, I move to approve an ordinance of Bonner County, the number to be assigned citing its authority and providing for the amendment of the official zoning map of Bonner County. Well, go for it. Step up.
Hey, let's keep it together.
Uh, official zoning map of Bonner County by the reclassifications of lands located in section twenty-seven, township fifty-five north, range four west, with Meridian, one, Bonner County, from agriculture forestry ten to rural five and providing for an effective date. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the official supplementary zoning map upon publication of the ordinance.
Okay, so this is a roll call vote. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
You want to be, you want to be nay on that? You're going to be aye on that?
Nay.
Okay, and with that, I think we are done. We will, uh, go ahead and adjourn this meeting at, uh, three fifty.
Well, I'll go okay to that one.